Sixty-seven years. Just passed out. Sick, wasn't nothing. At least there's a third child because it's not going to vary yet. He said they don't have topics because they don't.
Is it today?
No.
I sleep. I know.
How my granddad went.
Item four is withdrawn on me.
Your mom.
All right. You wear mine.
I saved our all clean. It worked. It worked.
This is cool.
I got some green glass.
I got new green glass.
I can actually see without them.
I don't know who's district.
I leave mine in the car.
It's District Ten.
Ladies and gentlemen, we're going to call our city council meeting for April the twenty-sixth, two thousand and eighteen to order. I'll ask that you please rise, give the invocation, followed by the pledge. God, we thank you for this day. Thank you for blessings that we receive every day. We also thank you for the trials and tribulations that we go through in our daily lives because it can help to make us stronger people and learn to love and give to each other more openly. Bless this meeting, bless the efforts that we do to make North Charleston a better place to live, work, and play. My precious name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated.
We got one proclamation, sir.
Okay.
King, you're going to handle the proclamation. And they're going to take a picture.
Have them out of Goodwill's. Those folks stand in line. Come on, please.
How are you doing? Thank you.
That's what seniors, I thought we'd let our elders thank you.
Boy, you know, I guess it's all.
Enjoying the party.
More than job, now you notice that.
Yeah.
Sam Har's older than I am. Yeah. So it didn't happen. This is a proclamation. Thank y'all for coming tonight.
Do you want me to read it?
Madam Clerk, would you read?
Yes, sir. A proclamation. Whereas Palmetto Goodwill Senior Community Service Employment Program includes countless older Americans who enrich and strengthen our community, and whereas Palmetto Goodwill Senior Community Service Employment Program is committed to engaging and supporting older adults, their families, and caregivers, and whereas we acknowledge the importance of taking part in activities that promote physical, mental, and emotional well-being, no matter your age, and whereas Palmetto Goodwill Senior Community Service Employment Program can enrich the lives of individuals of every age by promoting home and community-based services that support independent living, involving older adults in community planning, events, and other activities, and providing opportunities for older adults to work, volunteer, learn, lead, and mentor. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, our Keith Summy, Mayor of North Charleston, do hereby proclaim May, two thousand and eighteen, as Older Americans Month in North Charleston, and urge, pardon me, every citizen to take time this month to honor our older adults and the people who serve them as vital, as vital parts of our community.
Thank you. As a senior citizen, of course, I want to thank y'all, of course, for all the work y'all doing promoting these activities. We just opened some senior citizens places in North Charleston. We got one. We got another coming online, so that's helped people. People very enthusiastic about it. So North Charleston's taking a lead in that particular area. Thanks to the mayor. We appreciate all y'all do for us and all the citizens of North Charleston. Thank you, thank you again. This is your proclamation.
It's good to see you guys.
Jesus in here.
Thanks.
Alrighty. Thank you so much for this opportunity. We understand as a Goodwill, as an organization, that within the next several years, two thousand and twenty, the workforce of older adults will be at seventy-seven percent. And we're proud of our program that over the last year, we have trained three hundred and twenty-three older adults. Fifty-nine percent of those individuals are now currently employed in competitive employment, and that's something that we're very pleased of. So thank you so much for what you're doing for us, and we truly appreciate this honor. Thank you.
Thank you.
Get me a part done, Joe.
I think we got a photo.
Boss is spoken in public here.
Hold on.
I'm married. I'm a man of work.
I'm standing in front of better camera.
I'm glad Councilman King mentioned our senior centers. The first one is open, and we've had roughly four hundred people join so far. And the second one will be opening in the next month. And it is outstanding. The age is fifty, so fifty and above can join. It's a hundred dollars a year for residents of North Charleston, two hundred dollars a year for non-residents of North Charleston. We offer programs. Each one has an exercise pool and different workout rooms according to the type of workouts you desire to do, meeting areas, and just gathering places. And it has something that I found I'm not real good at. It's called pickleball. Pickleball court. My wife went out, and the first time, one of the employees smacked her side of the face with the ball, so I told her she wasn't cut out for that kind of stuff. But we do appreciate what is being done for our seniors because the lifeline of people are, you know, is a lot longer than it used to be, and their productivity is also extended out. So letting folks be a more integral part of our community even as they grow older is important. And so I thank Goodwill for what they're doing, helping to train these folks into jobs they can handle as senior adults, not as old folks like me that's a senior adult. All right, Madam Clerk.
Alrighty. See if I can get my mouse working. Item one is a request to approve the minutes from the April twelfth, two thousand and eighteen city council meeting.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any changes? Hearing none. The clerk, please call the row.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Jerome?
Aye.
Ms. Jameson?
Aye.
Mr. Brinson?
Aye.
Mr. Olds?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Skipper?
Aye.
Mayor Summy?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item two is the final reading of an ordinance rezoning the property addressed as twenty-five forty Jonah Street, TMS four seventy-two zero nine zero 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 one zero, from R-one single-family residential to R-one A low to medium density residential.
Move for denial.
Second.
Motion and a second for denial. Any discussion? Hearing none. The clerk, please call the row.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Jerome?
Aye.
Ms. Jameson?
Aye.
Mr. Brinson?
Aye.
Mr. Olds?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Skipper?
Aye.
Mayor Summy?
Aye.
Motion to deny carries unanimously. Item three is the final reading of an ordinance to rezone the property addressed as twenty-one oh five Taylor Street, TMS four seven-two one zero, Lot fifty-nine, from R-one single-family residential to R-one A low to medium density residential.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion and a second and discussion. Hearing none. The clerk, please call the row.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Jerome?
Aye.
Ms. Jameson?
Aye.
Mr. Brinson?
Aye.
Mr. Olds?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Skipper?
Aye.
Mayor Summy?
Aye.
Motion to approve carries unanimously. Item four, sir, has been withdrawn. You're welcome. Item five is the final reading of an ordinance rezoning the property addressed as thirty-three oh three Ottawa Avenue, formerly Charleston County, TMS four sixty-nine zero eight, Lot two eighty-four, now a portion of Lot one fifteen, from R-one single-family residential to B-two general business, and concurrently amending the comprehensive plan's future land use map for the same portion of the parcel, changing it from single-family traditional to major business retail.
We have a motion.
So move. I think this is the one that Mr. Brown, Councilman Brown, won it.
Correct.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. The clerk, please call the row.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Jerome?
Aye.
Ms. Jameson?
Aye.
Mr. Brinson?
Aye.
Mr. Olds?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Skipper?
Aye.
Mayor Summy?
Aye.
Motion to approve carries unanimously. Item six is the first reading of an ordinance for the proposed sale of not exceeding twenty-two million dollars in limited obligation bonds.
Second.
Motion and a second and discussion. Hearing none. The clerk, please call the row.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Jerome?
Aye.
Ms. Jameson?
No.
Mr. Brinson?
Aye.
Mr. Olds? Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Skipper?
Aye.
Mayor Summy?
Aye.
Motion carries eight to two. Thank you. Item seven is the first reading of an ordinance to approve a subordination of mortgage lien for a home owner occupied rehabilitation program at fifty-three seventeen Trudy Street, TMS four zero eight zero eight, Lot two three six.
So move.
Second.
Motion and a second and discussion. Hearing none. The clerk, please call the row.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Jerome?
Aye.
Ms. Jameson?
Aye.
Mr. Brinson?
Aye.
Mr. Olds?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Skipper?
Aye.
Mayor Summy?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item eight is the first reading of an ordinance authorizing and directing the abandonment of any interest the City of North Charleston may have in an unused drainage easement across TMS four four zero nine zero 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 zero.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion and a second and discussion. Hearing none. The clerk, please call the row.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Jerome?
Aye.
Ms. Jameson?
Aye.
Mr. Brinson?
Aye.
Mr. Olds?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Skipper?
Aye.
Mayor Summy?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item nine is a resolution accepting a portion of Weber Boulevard into the city's system maintenance tenants.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion and a second and discussion. Hearing none. The clerk, please call the row.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Jerome?
Aye.
Ms. Jameson?
Aye.
Mr. Brinson?
Aye.
Mr. Olds?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Skipper?
Aye.
Mayor Summy?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item ten is a resolution accepting property by quitclaim of real property located at the intersection of Ashley Phosphate Road and Brandywine Road, TMS number three nine five one four zero zero one eight six, and the adjacent abandoned right-of-way.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion and a second and discussion.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I just wanted to thank your staff for helping this become a reality. I've only been working on it fourteen years.
Well, I'm glad that y'all were able to get everybody on the same page. That's usually what takes over.
That's what took fourteen years.
Yes, but it is going to be an asset to the improvements in that area.
Mayor, is there any plans for that property?
It's going to be a passive park.
A Mr. Park.
It's a passive park area. Okay. Anything else? Hearing none. The clerk, please call the row.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Jerome?
Aye.
Ms. Jameson?
Aye.
Mr. Brinson?
Aye.
Mr. Olds?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Skipper?
Aye.
Mayor Summy?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item eleven is a resolution to approve a contract with Upper River Parks and Playground Commission.
Move for approval. Second.
Motion and a second and discussion. Hearing none. The clerk, please call the row.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Jerome?
Aye.
Ms. Jameson?
Aye.
Mr. Brinson?
Aye.
Mr. Olds?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Skipper?
Aye.
Mayor Summy?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item twelve is a resolution to approve a contract for services between the City of North Charleston and the North Charleston District.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion and a second and discussion. Hearing none. The clerk, please call the row.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Jerome?
Aye.
Ms. Jameson?
Aye.
Mr. Brinson?
Aye.
Mr. Olds?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Skipper?
Aye.
Mayor Summy?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item thirteen is a request to approve the increased funding for the two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen proposed home program.
So move.
Second.
Motion and a second. Before we vote, it's great that we're getting more money. This is one of those programs that has been popping down every year for years, and now we're at least getting a little boost in it, so I'm glad to see that.
Well, Mayor Summy, so that the audience can know, we have over maybe four to six hundred homes asking for our help, but we always run all the money because, you know, you only get a little bit, but now we have a little more that was allocated to us that now we can start maybe helping families that's in need of their home repair.
All right. Clerk, please call the row.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Jerome?
Aye.
Ms. Jameson?
Aye.
Mr. Brinson?
Aye.
Mr. Olds?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Skipper?
Aye.
Mayor Summy?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item fourteen is a request to approve change order number two for renovations to Quarters L in an amount not to exceed forty-five thousand five hundred dollars.
So move.
Second.
Motion and a second and discussion. Hearing none. The clerk, please call the row.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Jerome?
Aye.
Ms. Jameson?
Aye.
Mr. Brinson?
Aye.
Mr. Olds? Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Skipper?
Aye.
Mayor Summy?
Aye.
Motion carries nine to one. Item fifteen is a request to approve the reappointment of Ms. Eleanor Morrow to the Board of Zoning Appeals for a three-year term expire expiration date of April twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-one.
I think there's a second.
There's a second.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, and sorry, that wasn't on the top.
And Mr. Zachary.
Mr. Zachary Closeur. Thank you.
Move for approval.
Thank you.
Second.
Motion and a second and discussion. Hearing none. The clerk, please call the row.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Jerome?
Aye.
Ms. Jameson?
Aye.
Mr. Brinson?
Aye.
Mr. Olds?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Skipper?
Aye.
Mayor Summy?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item sixteen is a request to approve the reappointment of Madhev Aniel Kay Rao to the Planning Commission for a four-year term expiring April twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-two.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second and discussion. Mayor, who's the person? Who's coming off? I am not sure who rotated off.
It's a reappointment.
This is a reappointment.
And he lives in District Three.
This is someone who's already there and wants to continue serving. Clerk, please call the row.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Jerome?
Aye.
Ms. Jameson?
Aye.
Mr. Brinson?
Aye.
Mr. Olds?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Herr?
Aye.
Mayor Summy?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item seventeen is a request to approve the following reappointments to the Public Safety and Housing Committee. Three members, Saul Morris, Mr. Vincent Johnson. It says three, doesn't it?
It says three.
It's two.
But it's two. Asked stated, Saul Morris and Mr. Vincent Johnson.
Motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. The clerk, please call the row.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Jerome?
Aye.
Ms. Jameson?
Aye.
Mr. Brinson?
Aye.
Mr. Olds?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Skipper?
Aye.
Mayor Summy?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. We have two requests to address city council tonight.
Okay.
First one is from Susan Ash.
Ms. Ash, I'll remind you, you have three minutes.
Oh, I won't need that long. I was just coming to say hello. Some of you guys I haven't seen in a while, and some of you guys I have not met. My name is Susan Ash, and I am, I have three minutes. I can actually take a breath. I am the president, or the PTA president of Hershey Elementary, and I just wanted to come and let you guys know that we have our upcoming spring carnival this Saturday, April twenty-eighth, from eleven to two. It is off of Durant and Bixby. It is open to the public. We have an incredible list of awesome, we've got three pages of silent auction things that have been donated by our awesome community that we live in. I just wanted to come and tell you guys, if you want, come out Saturday. Hopefully, you can see the airshow from there, and come out and enjoy some awesome food. We've got games. We'll be dunking the principal. I'd love to have you come out and try to dunk you in the booth, but if anybody else wants to volunteer, we're looking for dunk tank.
We're not looking for a tsunami.
But yeah, just wanted to come and invite you guys to come out to the carnival on Saturday. Thank you.
Let me just say, I visited this school a couple of weeks ago.
Yes, and the chief came earlier this week as well, so thank you.
Met with some of the parents and principals, and they really are working hard to advance our children in the school, and we need to push as a community, our school board, to deliver better opportunity for our children in North Charleston.
Currently, Hershey is the only Montessori school in the north area. We will become a full Montessori at the end of the year.
And it needs expansion? And it needs expansion.
Yes.
Renovation.
Yes.
And to be placed where people can see it.
Yes.
You have to turn in between two businesses that offered to sell to the school district and years pass and they never did anything about it. But it would open up that front where as people are moving to the area, a lot of them, those of us who've been around forever know where Hershey is. But for those who haven't been around, it's difficult for people to find. And so I've committed to their group that I will be lobbying the school district because it is one of the up-and-coming schools in North Charleston. And so we've got to make sure that our kids are getting the best example of quality education that can be offered. And so I salute the efforts of the parents that are so dedicated to this school as well. They put a lot of time in it, I can tell you that.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
And hopefully you guys will share the love with the school board as well and let them know how important it is to provide the things that need to be provided for, for the only Montessori up in the north area. Thank you. And like I said, come out this Saturday and enjoy the carnival. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Yep. Second request is from Kay Hahn.
First, I want to thank you for your service. You all do so much for us and I also know you're having a big day tomorrow planning a budget, right? So this is just a short piece for you. I'm Kay Hahn. I live in Oak Terrace Preserve at 5129 Celtic Drive. I'm also a member of the Unitarian Church in Charleston and I'm a member of the Charleston Area Justice Ministry. Over 211,000 families in Charleston County not being able to afford to live here in Charleston County, we see a problem. And so the Justice Ministry is working to find some solutions that we could all possibly undertake to help us with this problem. A minimum wage worker puts in 110 hours a week to afford a basic two-bedroom apartment. That's 16 hours a day of work. Obviously, it's impossible. People can't afford to live downtown. They can't afford to live in Mount Pleasant. They can't afford to live anywhere in our area, not even here in Charleston, very easily anymore. So it's a problem for the entire county. The 2014 housing need assessment from the City of Charleston, the City of North Charleston, the town of Mount Pleasant and Charleston County stated that if the housing issues facing the region are ignored, residents will continue to migrate to the outskirts of the region. And as you know, we do not have transportation services which can help them very much as they live far from their work. This has happened right here in our community. This is the cause of traffic congestion. This is why many of our workers have long commute times. We need to approach this from a regional perspective. That is what we are finding through our research in the Justice Ministry because it's a regional problem. So on April 30th, your constituents and I call on you to come to our Nehemiah Action this year. We urge you to come to let the community know where you stand on affordable funding, affordable housing. So thank you very much. And I happen to have some free tickets to the Charleston Area Justice Ministry Nehemiah Action on April 30th, Monday night.
Leaving him with the clerk.
I'd be happy to do that. Thank you.
Anything else to come before the body? Mr. Mayor? Yes, sir.
Thank you all.
Two quick things. I had a delightful visit this morning by telephone with Councilman Brown. He sounded like he was getting stronger. He had his wit and good humor about him and he assured me that except for doctor's orders, he would have been here tonight and again in the morning. So all of our prayers have been answered. He seems to be on a very firm road for recovery. We're meeting at nine o'clock tomorrow, but breakfast begins at what time?
8:30.
8:30. Right, Ms. Williams?
Yes, everyone's invited to breakfast on council. Good old soul, southern breakfast, no continental.
Looking forward to it. Thank you, sir. Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
I just wanted to let you and the council know that I spoke with the Charleston County Council on Tuesday evening about our critical problem of noise in the third district. I was so well received. Everybody was shaking their head saying, "Thank you very much for updating us." I have an appointment to meet with Mr. Thigpen and a few others at county so we can integrate our problem of noise into the Palmetto Commerce Parkway interchange. And I certainly hope that I would get the support of the mayor and this body because like Ms. Hahn said, we can't afford to move anyplace else. So we need to reduce the noise so that we can live where we're living now. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor? I just briefly want to, for the record, you know, it's my regrets not to be at budget tomorrow as extended to this body and to yourself as a priority of mine as my special need, son. We have Special Olympics.
We admire you.
That's a good thing.
We admire you for setting your priorities where they need to be. I thank you for that. I hate to miss it, but I want to commend you and thank you so much for your diligence and all staff and not having a tax burden on the citizens and thank you for what you do. Thank you.
Mayor Summy, I would like to address Ms. Jerome, not Ms. Jerome, Ms. Virginia Jameson. They're planning on widening I-26 and it's going to be more of a headache with the noise because they're starting, I think, downtown, coming all the way up. And when I went to the wheeling meeting and told them that some of the property in the rear may be taken, first thing they said, "Are we going to get a noise wall?" And I told them, I said, "Northwood and Midland Park and the upper area, I've been fighting for that for years and nothing ever happened." And now they're widening I-26, which the noise is going to be more of a headache.
One of the things, the first noise wall that was promised by the state was actually in the Midland Park area as part of the widening and it never was delivered by the state. And then we worked to do it down around Northwood's area and it was never delivered. But as they're widening I-26 primarily for the truck traffic that's going to be going to the Newport Terminal along in the Dorchester Road exit area, it's probably going to wipe out one road of residential community.
They bind me out.
In that area. It's really, and I do hope that someone noticed that the state has come forward and after years has said that they're going to do, they have found a way they think they temporarily repair the lights on 526 from I-26 to the border of Mount Pleasant. Our light had been out for years. As you all know, I have begged, I've argued, I have fussed and they still have, they're waiting on the widening of 526 to expend the money. But I think a hint that two major accidents have occurred on 526 at the Rivers Avenue exit, cars hitting each other going in opposite directions. And it's because they cannot see how to get on 526 instead of turning in the outside lane to go to Mount Pleasant, they're turning in the inside lane, which is going into oncoming traffic. And late at night when the traffic is down and they don't see each other, we've had one fatality, hopefully the last one everybody has survived. But we need to keep hounding the state of South Carolina. They are not providing to local government the ability to use the funds that are collected to do what local government knows needs to be done. Or instance, we pass a new gas tax. The highway department says they're going to use it all for road repairs. Folks, we don't need repairs. We need larger roads. We need new roads, new cut-throughs, areas to keep the traffic flowing in our community. But they're not willing to dedicate any of those funds. I personally requested of the CHATS committee locally, we asked the state to give each county 75% of some of the gas tax collected in that county. And then we could determine in each county, we're located in three counties, so we would be working with Charleston, Berkeley and Dorchester Counties to make things work. I'll give you an example of what's happening right now. Charleston County, which always works with us pretty well, is looking at widening Dorchester Road again from two lanes to three lanes. However, it will stop when it gets to Dorchester County. So we've got the issue resolved maybe eight years ago where we went from four lanes to two lanes and then Dorchester County finally widened to four lanes on out. And I tell people, I'm not an engineer, but I know if I've got a four-inch pipe dumping into a two-inch pipe, when the two-inch pipe gets full, the four-inch pipe's going to back up. And so when you see your representatives in Columbia, when you run into them around here, explain to them that local government needs to have more input and say into what is done with the tax dollars that are collected in our areas. And so that was sermon number 406. Anything else to come before us? See y'all in the morning.